Good evening, everyone. It is December sixth. They rather balmy day outside. Uh, welcome to the Berlin Select Board meeting. We are meeting virtual uh only in light of the COVID nineteen pandemic. Let's see, so we have a call to order at seven o'clock. Bam, love when we're on time. Uh announcements, meeting of the Berlin Select Board are generally recorded for transmission on both the Berlin Cable Access Channel and YouTube. Your voice, image, and or phone number may be recorded. Alright. So we're off and running. So um first up is approval of the minutes.
But they looked good to me. I moved to approve them.
Second.
Alright, uh motion in a second, Stone Eye.
Hawkins Eye.
Keith Eye.
Alright, boom chucka lucka. Moving down, uh correspondence, Mrs. Nardowitz, you're up.
Okay, so the board received an email from a resident of Coburn Road regarding idling vehicles at Berlin Auto Parts. Um, the email has been forwarded to local officials and I just tonight sent um a kind of an FAQ um sheet on the anti-idling law, which is chapter ninety, section sixteen A of the general laws. Those um that law specifically provides that the Board of Health has local jurisdiction um for idling and the police or Board of Health could enforce this. So I'm going to recommend that the correspondence be forwarded to the Board of Health, although Richard was very good about weighing in um and um and responding on this matter. Um, it really is more appropriately in the Police Department and Board of Health's uh wheelhouse. So Mary, if you could send that all of that off to the Board of Health for their review and action, that would be great. Uh, I'm also going to, I'm also going to loop in um the Energy Committee because with their special stabilization fund, they might be willing um to provide some funding for a handful of anti-idling signs that we could put up in strategic areas around town.
I I meant to um respond to your email, Margaret. I believe uh Berlin Memorial may already have an idling.
They do. They, the board adopted a policy. Yeah, the board adopted, I, it was twenty seventeen or prior to that, but the board adopted a policy for municipal vehicles and for Berlin Memorial School. So both of those policies are active. This, this statute is generally applicable to all vehicles.
Okay.
So um it's, it's broader, but yeah, thank you for that. I found that too. Um, then we also received a DPU notice on emergency response coordination for downed poles. Um, I do know that the Police Department has protocols in place for notice to the various utilities, um notifying them when a pole is down and coordinating the utilities' response to that. Um Fred is now being looped in for highway uh to that emergency response protocol. Um, so that's being addressed as well. And then finally, um, the Conservation Commission Chair had a conversation with Kyle Tucker, who was interested in being on the trails. Um, so-called committee, it's more like a trails volunteer group. Um, but he has now expressed interest in being appointed to CONCON. So I'm asking that his volunteer op- application be kept active. And I've penciled it in for Select Board action on December twentieth after CONCON votes a recommendation on his appointment. Those are the latest correspondence updates.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Margaret. Appreciate that. Alright, so I don't forget. General public comment. Thank you, Chris.
Mm-hmm.
Since it sends me like the virtual, boop, 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 don't forget. Uh, have a few folks in the audience, don't know if you have any questions. There's also a person uh MS. So uh if you do raise your hand, we'll need you to let us know who you are. Alright, nothing? Okay, so uh we'll giddy up a little bit faster. So if we could bring, I'm assuming that is Mr. Cummings in the uh audience, if we could bring him up to the big table. For the General Department update and declaration of surplus equipment, I'm curious to what Fred found in the barn.
The, the barns, plural. Ah, multiple.
Oh, look at that, Fred's still at work.
Of course. Surprises.
You're waiting for the snow, Fred?
It's like sixty degrees out, there's no snow.
I know, really.
Hey, come on.
Fred, I know, I just had my generator fixed today, so I don't care. Let it snow, I'm good.
You're gonna need. Um, okay, um, so the one thing I didn't get a chance to do is get an estimate price of what that loader's worth now or the sweeper for when it goes on municipal.
Um, oh, that's fine, but I am recommending here right now, Fred, assuming that they exceed the uh the surplus value that the town administrator could otherwise approve, I'm going to ask the board right now to approve um the resale of the nineteen eighty Elgin Street Sweeper and the nineteen ninety-nine Volvo L seventy D front-end loader on municipal.
So moved.
Second.
Dear Godstone, yes.
Hawkins, yes.
Does somebody please get a photo of it so we can, you know, it can live forever in our hearts and on the town.
It's in your board packet, in your board packet.
Oh, is it? Alright.
Yeah, the, the two, both vehicles with pictures.
Mm-hmm, wow.
But that I don't know who took the picture, but they did a great job of the pictures.
Fred took, Fred took all the pictures.
Nice.
Okay, so you've made a motion and seconded.
Yes.
And, and we voted, yep. We were just fast.
Fred, sorry to interrupt, but I look forward to working with you on getting this up on municipal, municipal.
Yep.
Excellent. Um, okay, um, so just a quick thing for the old business. Um, last, last month, we talked about the new hire. Um, and Dylan getting his CDL permit, we're just waiting for him to get his full license now. Um, he is out driving with um another person because he's going for his Class A and uh hopefully we can change his mind to get his Class B done and just move on. Um, and there wasn't an issue with the, the brand-new loader with the hydraulic oil going in the transmission. That's all been fixed under warranty and has been working fine. Um, our bucket truck class is still in the process through Maya. Uh, that kind of fell through. It was supposed to be done in December, I mean, in November. Uh, but now they were looking into December, but I don't see it happening this month. Um, there were some various projects done at the Minus for building and we started with the Cell Street Bridge Project. Um, so, so far for this year, uh, we started off filling the road edges uh the beginning of the month, which is something we've been meaning to get to for a while. Um, we took the American flags down like we do every year. Um, we did some work at the community garden, we've blown out the water lines, uh emptying the tank, got that ready for winter. The same with the Cell Cemetery, we were asked to take the water tank, uh drain the water tank and take the pump out of the the, the building down there. So we're actually keeping that in a warm place right now uh till springtime. Um, we had to update our hazardous waste permit um because that should have been done when we first moved in here. Um, so that was updated, so at least now we're compliant with storing our hazardous waste here. Uh, the leaf cleanup continues. It's really kind of on the downhill slope now, which is good because it gives us a chance to get caught up on other things. Um, we did put out the six-ton of hot tub uh down on Sawyer Hill Road where it meets Route sixty-two. Uh, we raised the, the basin up a little bit with a riser to make it a little more friendly coming around the corner. Um, pretty recently, we replaced the Jersey barriers, I'm sure everyone's seen on West Street at the old fire station. Uh, and that's because there was a car accident that went off there and took out the fencing. Um, that is in the hands of Barley Consolidated right now for them to do the repair to the fence. Um, and then we're gonna work on putting actual guardrail up uh in place to um to try and prevent the fence from coming down. The hard part with that is um underneath the granite uh top stone, it's all field stone wall. So we don't want to put the, um, the guardrail up against it. Um, so you have like access to the, the sidewalk from the street. Because if they start hitting the guardrail, now we're gonna start loosening up that field stone and it's gonna open up a whole can of worms to replace the wall. Um, so I actually have the fine time to reach out to Mass Highway to see if that's something that we have to run through them where it is a state road but maintained by the town, if that's something we could just put up or not. Um, and see how they go about doing it. Um, so all our trucks are ready for plow uh with the plowing season now on us. Um, all the trucks are ready. We're doing repairs to one of the dump trucks now, which should be done by the snow on Wednesday. And um, and I met with VHB, the engineering firm that's gonna be working with us for the bridge project on Cell Street. Um, we did just get an email from them today with some other questions about widening the road, uh which I haven't yet responded to. Um, hopefully I'll do that before I leave tonight. Um, we set up the elevator boiler inspections and actually had to add a few to the buildings that weren't being done, um, which will reflect in the budget. Um. There were two residents in town that had concerns about some property damage being done by, uh, one of them by rainwater, which we've met with, addressed um with what we're gonna be doing to fix that problem. And another one was just on Gates Pond Road, people cutting the corner uh and really starting to tear up the person's yard. Um, so we put delineators down there for now to see if that works. Uh, hopefully it does. Um, and like I said, we're still working with uh Maya to get that bucket training underway. Um, what took so long for that was they need a minimum people for the, the class and obviously we don't have that minimum here. So they've been reaching out to all the area departments to see who would be interested in having people come over for it. Uh, and then obviously started the budget uh preparation. Um, just some of the things we helped out with, with other spots in town was uh right around the special town meeting time. We assisted with just TVs and chairs, setting them up, bringing them down. And uh, and just doing a little bit of odds and ends work at the Bullet House as they uh start cleaning out. And uh, they cleaned up some brush out back for us, which was great. Um, and that's where we're at right now. I believe.
Very good. I, I just, I, Fred, I just want to say um thank you for everything you continue to do um at the Bullet House, getting things out of there so that they can move forward with the renovations. I know some of this has, is just kind of being kind of popped on you, you know? Oh, by the way, can you move uh whatever it was, a piano or uh whatever it was in there? So I, I just want to say I appreciate it and um I know with everything else on your plate, it's not easy.
Well, we do have some stuff. Um, I did get the last email that came out from uh Elaine. There is stuff out there now, I did see it today. Um, and within the next few days, we'll get that picked up. So to make room for more.
Thank you.
Hey Fred, on your email about the uh highway inventory?
Yes.
What's the chicken coop on South Street?
So the chicken coop was known as like that big ugly building out front by the tennis.
The brown one, yep.
The one that Scott loves so much.
Yeah.
Yes, alright.
Yes.
Alright.
The one that, yeah, the one that sort of blocks a view of what could be a beautiful South Carbon area.
Yeah, yes, that would, because it's twin act all down years ago.
Yeah.
Alright, okay.
The uh, uh, and then so along those lines, the we don't know what we could do with a Buffalo Springfield antique roller, right?
Well, we actually had talked, that's more or less like a um, so between Jim and I, we were talking, we'd like to get it up here to the highway garage. You know, like you, you look around at some of the, the DPWs, they have something out front. Um, right, radar parked out front, but the grader's usable, that we could actually put the Buffalo in place of that.
Hmm, hmm.
Obviously, spent some time painting it so it's not an eyesore, but.
Right.
Yeah, I, I don't think there's too many people in town that would like to.
The grader is actually usable? It runs?
Oh yes, it runs. We used to have it parked on the um, what do you call it, down the transfer station. We used to regrade the road every springtime.
Oh, that's interesting.
Um, you know, as, as one of my sort of peeves really was is that we, we built that new building, the idea was that you'd be able to consolidate all of this stuff into one building, and I believe the building was shrunk a little bit. Um, uh, without, I, I'm trying not to push like, I mean, this is not an action of the Select Board because I'm only one person, but that I'd love to understand the exercise we take, like, could we get you, could we get highway down to two buildings? I think that would also make you guys more efficient if there's not things scattered all over town.
Yeah, and then, but um a few of the guys started today, like, some of the things that we usually move from here into like the old highway garage for the winter storage to make room here, um, they've actually been making room here. Uh, knowing the future, we were gonna be uh having to give it up. So now's the time to try and find a room instead of waiting for like the day to be sprung on us and be like, you need to be out.
Yeah.
Uh, at the fire station, uh, it was good around to have the inventory because I know what we have now that we have to make room for. Um, so hopefully, I'd say probably even in a, a few months, we could probably have two of the buildings opened up.
Nice.
Nice, that'd be nice. And I think any, any help we can be to like help determine that some of these things might not belong in town inventory anymore, that, that uh it would, uh, that we could start sort of shrinking some of the stuff. And it's weird because I look at the list and like, oh, I could see how that's useful, but it's like, is it useful enough that we should give up valuable storage space because someday it might have some use?
Right.
So, so um I think that we, we can lean on, on Fred to make recommendations on disposal of the various items on the list. Um, it looks like most of these, you know, aside from the large equipment, most of these I'd be able to just accept and we could go ahead and dispose of them how Fred recommends doing so.
I agree. I, I'd feel horribly in uh uh unqualified to determine what the Highway Department should keep and toss. I would, I would fail at that job miserably. So you're right, I do not want to be part of that. I just want to provide help if there's some help that's needed, but I, you know, don't want to make those decisions.
Yeah, Fred, what are the loose maps? Are they, so maps of the town, maps of?
Yeah, they're all the, the old roadmaps, like every time there was a project done in town, whether it be like a Route sixty-two reconstruction. Um, um, basically, it's to the point where a lot of them are starting to get faded, hard to read. Um, so we have a bunch of loose ones because we do have a map holder, um, like a cabinet, but the cabinet's full. So that's why we have on top. Uh, on, the loose ones.
Some of those might qualify uh under historic preservation.
That's what I'm wondering.
Capital, for a community preservation, um, you know, historical document preservation. If, if they're, you know, if, if they're worthwhile keeping.
No, I, I, I think my favorite one is the speed bump for the school roadway. You're not using it, could you drop it off on Lyman, please? Kind of like put it right at the end of my driveway, that would be awesome. Uh, yeah, I know, I, you know, kudos to you and, and the rest of the highway guys for putting this list together and, and letting us know what's in town. Yeah.
Fred, Fred, did they use that um speed bump in the, in the spring and summer?
Yes, we're supposed to put it spring. Uh, we take it out in the summer.
Right.
It stays in in the summer, um, but the time it comes out is in the fall, so when we have to plow.
Yep.
Um, this year it didn't get put down though.
Yeah.
There are enough bumps in that driveway, right?
Boom, boom.
That's natural bumps.
No, this is awesome.
I think it'd be fun to have the same exercise done by like police and fire.
And see what they have.
I, because they don't have things that say inside of one or three quarter or the chicken coop, but I bet that, I know they have things in the old fire station and and the other building there in West.
Yep.
Never mind other places around town that we've forgotten about.
No, and as, and as Scott said, I mean, Fred, if you need anything from us, you know, we probably can't help you make the decisions, but um, you know, we'll help in whatever way we can.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Fred, I mean, Scott, did you want to talk with Fred about the Sawyer Hill Road line striping? I did come across an old email on that.
Yeah, I, I think we can do that outside of a Select Board meeting, because again, it's me acting sort of as an individual in town and not as a representative of the Select Board. It's, I just have a resident here who submitted something and just asks me about it every couple of weeks.
Just so, just to fill you in, I have shared this with Fred, so he's up to speed on what went, what went back and forth.
Yep, it sounds like spring is fine.
Okay, perfect.
Alright, anything else for Senior Fred? Alright.
No.
Good luck.
Good, good, great.
Good to go. So thank you again, Fred, for everything that you guys are doing to um keep us safe and no snow this year. There'll be no need to plow. Okay.
Come on now, don't be mean.
Wednesday, there's a storm coming, so.
Yes.
Alright, cool. Thank you, Mr. Fred, appreciate you.
Thanks, Fred. See you tomorrow. Bye-bye.
Bye.
Alright, and look at that. Right on time for Miss Victoria Flynn to come on down to the big table.
I think Victoria's gonna want to share her screen for her.
Hi, everybody is.
Hi, Victoria.
Hello, Victoria.
How are you guys doing?
Good, and yourself?
I'm doing alright. Not bad for a Monday.
It's only Monday. Alright, the floor is yours. Margaret said about twenty minutes, hopefully we can scoot everything in and if not, then we'll just uh bring you on back.
So no pressure, okay?
No pressure.
I'm gonna share my screen if you guys don't mind. I just have a little presentation done. Alright. So um, so as you guys know, last time I was here was the beginning of uh September. So it seems like every three months I get to see you guys. So at our last meeting, we were talking about expanding the COA uh roles for myself and looking at what we need to do in the future to expand the COA as well as social services. So now here's a roadmap to what we're looking at. Okay, so this is actually just a little snippet for you guys, just to kind of see what it is that our seniors see when they come down to the COA room, just in its current state. Um, as you can tell, it's not always well-lit. Um, and it seems to be sometimes, you know, full of random stuff that may or may not need to be there, but um it's, it's really hard, I think, sometimes for some of the seniors, especially if they're not from Berlin or if they're newer to town, to come down to always find the COA room because again, not everybody is fully aware. Even last week, I had somebody come down to see me and they were like, oh, I had to get redirected twice because they didn't know really where to go. So um, that's just something, you know, again, this is our space for now. It's currently being shared with the Boy Scouts on Wednesday nights and with the food pantry for a storage of a refrigerator and some coolers. But otherwise, this is really just what we have as of now for space. So currently, what the COA is offering is Tai Chi and yoga classes. Tai Chi is only in-person, yoga is both in-person and virtual. We are now doing our chef du jour uh grab-and-go meal that's gonna be offered on December twenty-ninth uh for all the seniors in town if they so want to participate. We are gonna be having an art activity in the COA room next Monday, the thirteenth. We've had various webinars going on for the COA. These have included a webinar with an elder law attorney. We have talked about um the Mass General Build that's gonna take place in Westboro that is planned for twenty-twenty-three. We have had information about um Fallon Summit and we're gonna be having an additional webinar coming up on the sixteenth about in-home live-in care um that is available through a local agency. Um, we, as you guys know, we have our bimonthly Powderhouse News. We are having our monthly uh blood pressure clinic through the Nishoba Boards of Health, first Thursday of every month down in our room. And they also will offer uh potential flu shots to anybody interested. We have our wall of durable medical equipment. Um, I'm helping seniors find COVID and flu boosters and vaccinations if needed, as well as any additional case management or resources and support. And then just for you guys, just as a reminder, as of June, um, we are looking at a population for Berlin of uh three thousand two hundred and twenty-seven. And the senior population is still just slightly over a thousand, so trying to do what we can to meet the needs of all. So basically, um, our areas of need and really improvement at this point are focusing on the van driver and the commercial kitchen. So at this point, um, our job posting has been put on Facebook indeed and the Clinton item. Um, I actually got a to call today from somebody, so I'm hoping to interview them before end of week. Um, I have reached out to other local COA directors to see if they're uh, if they're in a similar situation and if they have other drivers that were looking for some part-timer per diem hours. It looks like that this is a problem, not just in Berlin, um, but I know of at least two other communities who are actively trying to search for drivers, and there's a few other communities that are barely hanging on to the ones that they have. Um, we have raised the rate of the driver for the COA to seventeen oh one an hour. It was previously, I believe, uh fifteen twenty-three, I believe. Um, and that uh myself, as well as the council, are willing to step in and do any rides if possible to help out the residents of town, whether it's a medical ride or a um, a shopping ride as well as um, you know, other uh lovely members of our town as well, hint, hint, Margaret. Um, helping out to also help the seniors as well. Um, in terms of a commercial kitchen, so back in the past, the Council on Aging was using the commercial kitchen from First Parish Church. We did have a license um through the Nishoba Boards of Health to uh use the kitchen. Um, and it was certified and we had at least one person, I believe was uh served safe uh certified. Um, what wound up happening, and again, this was pre-me, so I could be, I may need to be corrected, but I believe that there were some issues with the kitchen at First Parish and that they are no longer eligible to receive a license for um the Board of Health in terms of using it for food prep until any needed repairs are done. Um, the council currently doesn't have anybody who is certified, but the thought would be is if down the road, we do have access to a commercial kitchen, we would then obviously apply again to get the appropriate licenses and get the certified training that we would need. So in terms of expanding our space, uh, the cap, uh, our capital planning request has been submitted uh to the Capital Planning Board. I haven't met with them yet, I'm sure I will be soon. Um, and basically what we are doing is it's just a guesstimate as to what it, what the steps are gonna need to be to get um, a senior center and or expanding our space. Um, because as you can tell right now, we are sharing our space and, I mean, we're, we're, we're fine doing so, but it's, it's not enough for what our seniors and what our town needs. So as of right now, for next fiscal year, we're really looking um into exploring potential use of buildings within town. Um, I know that that is a town project as a whole, but that is something that also the council is very interested in seeing as to what buildings would be best, you know, able to be renovated or best feasible for us in the future. FY twenty-four and twenty-five are looking into the construction estimates and, you know, trying to get any repairs done. And that we're looking at probable um potential opening of space at earliest FY twenty-six. Something else that the council can, I mean, that the Select Board can consider as well is if whether or not we want to try to look for maybe a regional space for our seniors. As you guys all know, the town of Berlin is regional in terms of a school system. And if there are concerns regarding having funding and upkeep of a specific senior center or a multipurpose building in town, that may be a way to go. Um, there are some towns in our area that don't have a senior center or who may have a senior center and they're just a smaller town to begin with, so that may be something that we could explore down the road. I will say that in one of the local, um, Governor Baker just passed a ARPA funding for the, for the state. And within that, um, the state actually granted the city of Brockton a million dollars towards their Council on Aging to renovate and fix their senior center. So there is a potential out there for funding. I don't know honestly, you know, the contingencies upon that, and that would obviously need to be explored, but it looks like that there is a possibility for it. I think especially too, if we are able to argue that this not only would be for a Council on Aging, but even for social services as well, it may boost our argument. And if it is something that would be used again for multiple towns, again, I think that is another argument to consider that may boost our argument for funding. So in general, um, we're also looking at social services. So as you all now know, I am also the Social Services Director in Berlin. Hi. Um, so with that, um, there's different things that, um, because of that, there's different things that I want to incorporate since we really don't have much in terms of social services for the town. So part of what I'm looking at doing is there's two initiatives right now that um is going on. One of which is called ACES, so it's basically uh the Alternative for Community Emergency Services Act. So basically what this does, it is, is funding through the state to municipalities and uh agencies, usually nonprofits, that are engaging non-police um employees, again, usually mental health experts, social workers, community liaisons into responding to various calls that are then gonna basically meet the needs that are not necessarily a police call. This could be something like case management, crisis intervention, mental health intervention, things along those nature. That again, we know that our police department is stretched thin. This may be another way to again, help alleviate, bring some alleviation and make sure that we bring some alleviation and make sure that we get, I know, our residents what they need. There are several cities and towns right now that have various initiatives about this, and I can provide you guys with more information on it. Governor Baker's bill is also looking into additional funding for these programs ongoing. As of right now, the focus of it tends to be on cities such as like Worcester, Lynn, Salem, you know, some of the bigger cities, but my, I suspect that, you know, as these cities kind of tailor their programs, they're gonna look to expand it to more of the cities and towns. Another program that is out there, it's called Yahoo. So it's basically young adults helping out others. So it's basically middle and high school age kids helping out our seniors, which I think would be wonderful. It's a good way to kind of collab everybody together. It's a win-win, I think, for everybody. Um, there are a couple towns that are involved with it. I believe Sterling is one of them. I think Shrewsbury is also looking into starting it as well. I think it's definitely something that we can look into. Obviously, you know, with COVID, that may play into it, but again, something that we can explore, um, you know, for, for some future, you know, goodwill. Other things that I'm doing as well is I've offered to do any check-ins with staff, provide any wellness support, any coping skills, things of that nature. My hope is that I wanna start doing some creative trainings for various topics, including, you know, mental health, substance abuse. I wanna do, wanna burnout, hoarding, you know, dementia and cognitive impairments, basically, uh, in harm reduction. So basically, really looking at potential hot topics and making sure that we have clear, concise trainings and data that, you know, can then be used to shared without, you know, different departments in town, and again, potentially, you know, share that information out with the public as well. Uh, lastly, what I'm also looking at doing in the not-too-distant future is start offering lots of support groups to the residents of Berlin. You know, as we all know, Berliners take care of Berliners, and I think that, you know, there are a lot of people right now in Berlin who are going through a tough time, whether they have a loved one who is ill, or whether or not they're just having a tough time dealing with COVID and, you know, feeling isolated. Just different things that we may be able to kind of, you know, come together with, and just again, provide a safe space for people to voice their feelings and just make sure that everybody feels that they've been heard and represented. So again, something that I would really love to work on in the not-too-distant future. So, um, in terms of working with others in town, um, you know, obviously, the Council on Aging works closely with Berlin seniors. Our most recent endeavor has been Twinkle Tour Part Two. Um, the new, uh, the new, uh, video came out today. It's basically Judy Mills and I doing another, uh, chat about the loveliness of, uh, the Twinkle Tour. Um, we got the Twinkle Van going. It's, it's a great time, so I'm excited about that. Um, we've both decided that we wanna offer the Twinkle Tour every year, and then maybe next year, if we can, maybe do like a Twinkle Tour, you know, with all the other communities and like try to go for bragging rights or something, just something fun. Um, with the food pantry, uh, back in October, uh, Mary McHale did have a bunch of nursing students from Fitchburg State come down to do a presentation about community needs. Um, and I wanted speaking to them from a social, social work and, you know, uh, social services point of view, especially with elders. They had a great time. I had a great time. Um, Nishoba Boards of Health, we are doing our monthly blood pressure clinics, and again, the flu clinics as needed. And then also to the Boards of Health, the Nishoba Boards of Health, the Fire Department, and the Police Department, and I are doing the Triad, which is basically the coordination of care, um, to again, address the needs of elders, um, that may or may not having their needs met already. So basically, in terms of what we still need is, um, this first thing is it's called PsychInfo. Um, for those of you who are not aware, PsychInfo is a huge database. It's a huge knowledge of behavioral health, mental health, and social work that is basically all together in one package. So I was talking to Margaret about this. For me to do what I wanna do for the town in terms of getting up-to-date research and, you know, being able to justify my ARPA position as well as do the trainings and the research that I need, I need up-to-date information, and PsychInfo is the way I'm gonna get it. We are able to get an annual membership, um, through PsychInfo, so it would be good, and I would have unlimited access for it. And again, it's, it's a benefit to the town if we're able to get it, because it's a resource that not only I could use, but it's a resource that the town could use for any, um, for any funding potential, especially for grants. Um, and again, like, this is like the premier database that we could use for that. So that is something that I am looking to get, um, before, hopefully, you know, towards the beginning of next year. And then again, it, in the future, we're, we're needing some kitchen access and some additional space. But that is really what we're just looking at as a whole. Um, again, you know, the Council on Aging and I, we are aware that none of this is gonna happen tomorrow. We just wanna let you guys know that we do have a plan to proceed forward and that we are realistically looking at expanding what we can offer the seniors as well as everybody in town, because we think that they deserve more. So yeah, that is my presentation. Any questions?
Victoria, I don't know how we found you or how you found us, but I am thrilled that you are here in all that you do, and I learn so much, um, when you come to us. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, I have questions. I always have questions, but you know, Scott and Chris can go first.
Well, I, can I just ask about Saint, uh, or First Parish? You were using the kitchen there, correct, or?
So the council previously was. So again, this was pre-me, but I guess back in the day, what they were doing is they were using the church to do meals for the seniors, because it sounds like for the, um, Meals on Wheels, it was going through First Parish. But again, once that license, I believe, got revoked, then the town wanted then switching over to MACH out of Fitchburg, and they are now the ones providing the meals.
So I, I thought the Meals on Wheels was being done at Saint Joseph's. No?
Nope.
Okay, I didn't know whether, as I know they have a kitchen. I don't know if they, you know, if it would be, uh, licensable.
That I don't know.
And I thought, I thought Meals on Wheels was done by Wheat and Clinton.
It's, it is.
We provide some stuff to them, but they, they've just did a push for like volunteers to help them deliver things.
So basically, what happens is is that MACH oversees, oversees the whole food nutrition as a whole. They work with Wheat to get the meals out.
They were only doing it like once a week, weren't they? I'm pretty sure.
As of right now, our Meals on Wheels are twice a week.
Okay.
Victoria, is it that the church doesn't have anybody who has a cert-safe certification or an allergen certification, or is it kitchen issues?
Kitchen issues.
Okay.
At least, again, that was the last I heard. I could be wrong, but the last I heard, there was an issue with the stove. I don't know if it's the stove itself, or if it's the wall behind the stove. There was an issue with that, and because of that, they could, they were not then, um, eligible for their certification and their license. So until those repairs were made, then, like, once the repairs were made, the Board of Health could go out again and then determine if it's now safe to use. And if it's safe to use, then we could, you know, I could even go and get served safe, certified, so we could then be up and running.
And so you're looking for a commercial kitchen sort of twice a week to make meals?
Even honestly, at this point, Scott, I mean, the council would really love to even just do some meal-focused, um, activities for the seniors as well. Healthy eating, good nutrition, it just even something along those lines. But right now, because of the fact that we don't have any commercial kitchen space, and we don't have any license, we can't do anything. Um, at this point, it's, you know, there's no, there's no use for anything. Ideally, I think we would love to have a kitchen that we could, you know, operate and provide meals on a frequent basis. Like, for example, I North, Northborough, you know, does meals twice a day. Wheat does meals twice a day. I, ideally, like, that's, that would be wonderful, but at this point, you know, we would just love a kitchen even just sporadically, just to do something. Even like the meals that we're offering to seniors now, if we had our own kitchen, we could generate them. It would save money. It would save some time. It would be a bit easier to disperse, and we could customize it a bit, but at, at this point, that's just not an option.
And Margaret, we can't use the kitchen at eighteen seventy Town Hall because?
We cannot prepare food in that kitchen. The septic is non-compliant.
Right. That's why we can't upgrade it to a commercial kitchen is not.
Right.
Okay.
Um, I have to say, you know, Victoria's point about the commercial kitchen, you know, it's, it's, uh, uh, it would be a great, great step, uh, being able to prepare food in a commercial kitchen. Um, but going beyond that, um, you know, further into the future, if there was a space where seniors could actually gather, in one of my prior towns, um, the Council on Aging did a program called Feel for Food, and they'd have guest chefs come in every single week, you know, one day a week. A guest, just a person who knows how to cook something or wants to show seniors how to cook something, they'd come in and actually share their recipe, prepare, um, a dish, and share it with the seniors there. It was just a great activity. You know, food is always good to bring people together. So, you know, that type of thing i- in the future is just such a, it's just such a nice, you know, a, a nice activity for, for folks.
And then where, there are, sort of as we pointed, the First Parish churches might be under some renovation or need. Saint Joseph's has a commercial church, a commercial kitchen, doesn't it? There, there's one at the elementary school, although I assume that's used during school days.
Hmm, my question for Victoria would be if we need to have a certified manager who is there using the commercial kitchen. We'd actually need to have someone designated as, as a serve-safe food manager or overseer, or, um, I mean, it's something we could get more details on, but I think we'd actually need someone assigned to go there to the commercial kitchen in order to do that.
Yeah, we would need somebody who's, uh, like, you know, who's basically certified to oversee any work that would be done.
Yep, it's, it, it is not a super difficult thing to do. We have a couple people up here who are serve-safes for our commercial kitchen up here on the hill. Um, uh, and they check in when we're doing our meals and stuff, so I don't.
We had an issue with, uh, needing to have someone certified, I believe. And I believe it was, I thought they were doing their meals out of, uh, Saint Joseph's, and it was Janet Woodward. Um, because she would, she would do jams and jellies and things at Indian Head, so she was certified, but I'm not, I'm not, I think they may have changed all the rules, and I don't even know whether Indian Head, uh, you know, does it in, um, at the, at the farm or not. Um, but anyway, she offered to be the person, but she couldn't be there on site every single time, and so there was an issue with that. Um, I don't know how that all played out.
So Margaret, is it out of our, out of our swim lane, um, to just check in with First Parish Church to see if they have any plans to redo the kitchen?
I think that's something that Victor. I think that's something that Victoria, um, would be willing to check on, as well as checking in further with the Nishoba Associated Boards of Health on the certification, um, and Saint Joe's to see, you know, to see what's going on there and whether or not, you know, is anything available. I know, Scott, you mentioned that the commercial kitchen, um, it's where Hill might be, might be available, so we could potentially look into that option as well, at least on a short-term basis.
Hmm.
Okay.
Victoria, are you willing to look into those things?
Yeah, absolutely.
Awesome.
Any other questions for Victoria?
No, the only thing I have to say is, Berlin is truly blessed to have Victoria here, um,
Yep.
her skill set. Um, I, what I'd like to see is I know that there are a lot of people, um, who might be suffering in silence, and if there's any, any, any possible way, you know, be on Facebook, website, anything, um, that Victoria, you could think of, um, to get the word out, and, and let people have the confidence knowing um, that if they come to meet with you, um, you know, their, their meetings with you are confidential. It's, um, it's such a valuable resource, um, for, for Berliners.
Absolutely. I'll, I'll think of something.
So Victoria, I had three questions for you. Um, so have you checked, I know that you've checked with other COA places. Have you checked with the local schools to see if any of their bus drivers? I don't know the certification of a bus as a bus. Um, you know, might have some part-time availability. You gotta figure the bus drivers are done by what, nine, and back on the road by two?
I can certainly reach out to some of the school bus companies if they have any availability. Yeah.
Actually, I actually have a friend I was thinking of reaching out to, to see if he was interested.
Okay.
Um, and I know you mentioned Yahoo, and before you got here, um, I had actually gone with the other Council on Aging Director, and we visited the principals at Tohonto and Passavet, and kind of pitched the program, at least the idea, you know, for their seniors to help our seniors, you know, whether it's yard work, which would be perfect. Uh, you know, something outside, don't really have to engage. And I can tell you that both were totally on board and thought it would be a fantastic opportunity for the seniors to do their community service or things like that, to put on their application for colleges. So, you know, know that that's an outlet. Unfortunately, you know, the world fell apart. Our old director left that kind of went click uh, on that, but I bet if you went back to the schools and approached them, you know, maybe not now, uh, because it's getting towards the end of the year, but next year, uh, they had talked about going to their National Honor Societies as well, that are very big on that. So, um, you know, I, I think if there's a plan, I know that there was concerns about, well, if it's yard work, equipment, and where are you gonna store it, and who signs off on it. So I know that there's a crap-ton of stuff that needs to be done. It's just not simple as, you know, Sally's student matches up with, you know, Mary homeowner in town. I get that. Um, but, you know.
I was even thinking too of having, having even the seniors, um, work with, you know, our elders in town to even get some technological updates as well. I mean, there's so much in terms of social media, and there's different apps. Uh, you know, again, there's a lot of resources out there, and I mean, I, I don't even know it all. So I think, you know, again, the youngest generation knows the stuff cold, like the back of their hand. I think that that'd be a great way to, again, make sure that our elders in town could go and then be connected and use these resources for what they are as well. So even if somebody didn't wanna do any physical work per se, but then had this other additional knowledge, I think that that would something that would be extremely valuable.
Yeah, the library used to have, um, this young gentleman, can't remember his name, but like every other Saturday, he would be down the library, and you brought your stuff down. I can tell you that I went down there, because I couldn't get one of, uh, uh, my NOOK to work at all. It wouldn't sync, and he was like, oh, da, 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 and handed it back to me. I'm like, thanks. So I'm sure that there's, um, you know, kids out there that would be willing to, you know, to do that, but, um, if you need any help, I'm, I'll definitely volunteer, because well, in a few years, I'm gonna be coming back to you as a senior, you know, asking for help. So I'd rather get on the ground level now.
Well, I'm still technically your Social Services Director for now, so there you go.
There you go.
So.
Well.
Uh, uh, back to Van, we, the, the van doesn't have like a wheelchair lift in it, does it?
Yes, it does.
It, it does? Okay.
Yep.
So like, that when we give people rides, we don't have to take apart their wheelchairs, or we don't have to, the van driver doesn't have to like carry the person or stuff up or down?
No. So if somebody needed the wheelchair, um, ramp, basically what it is, it's completely automated. It lowers down to the ground. There is a seatbelt that goes around the person and the wheelchair to secure it in place as the lift goes up. And then there are anchors to the floor that then just hook on to the wheelchair itself on both sides, and then there's a special seatbelt.
And, and then for the, the van driver position, it is, it, there's not regular hours for that. That's one of the barriers we have that like some, uh, weeks it could be one hour, and some weeks it could be twenty hours, and it's hard to guarantee any income to somebody.
So that is part of the challenge. What we are looking to do now is basically try to designate like one or two days a week, like say, for example, like Tuesday, Thursday, and say that we're offering the hours of ninety-two for both days, and then basically just tell everybody, here are your hours, book. And make sure that we fill in as much of that time as humanly possible with rides. I think we can do it. And then the hope is if we get a secondary driver down the road or something like that, then we can, you know, again, start doing kind of what we did previously, but just to start out, I think that that's really what we're looking for.
Yeah, I agree. It's sort of a tear, because if you, that, that, that is not as customer-friendly as we can give you a ride whenever you want it, but then again, for a driver to not know if you're gonna work one hour or twenty hours, it's hard for you to do any budgeting, and it becomes, in this environment of hiring, it becomes a not attractive position at all.
Right.
And do we need, do we, they need a CDL? How big is the vehicle?
No, it's a ten-passenger van at tops. Honestly, what we, we have ten seats for the van, but to fully use the wheelchair lift without any issue, honestly, you really can only have like six or seven seats in there.
Well, and with COVID protocols, you probably don't wanna cram the van.
No, most, honestly, most towns, they've had, they have bigger vehicles, and even them, they're using, I think, up to like six or eight max. And they actually have a van that will hold, um, anywhere from like twelve to twenty-four people. So I would honestly think in our van, I would do maybe three max. Um, just because, again, making sure that we just keep everything as, you know, COVID for, COVID protocol as possible.
It requires a, it just requires a valid, um, Class D. It requires a, it just requires a valid Class D driver's license, does not even require a passenger endorsement.
No, you just need to get the CPR certification, first aid certification, and then obviously the clean driving record and the. Bill of health that you're safe enough to do the job. And that's it.
I renewed my CPR certificate this weekend.
I hear Scott's wheels turning. All right. Well, Victoria, as I said, as always, your presentations are extremely detailed and. I think give everybody food for thought on how we, how we can help you and what we can do. So. You know, please come back more often. Let us know what we can do. I know that you work closely with Margaret, you know, she's just an encyclopedia. Of that, but if there's anything that we can do, we're here for you.
Oh, you might eat those words. So be careful.
No, I'm good. I'm good. Bring it on, you know, mother always said, paid for with what you can. So.
And don't forget about your liaison.
Oh no, trust me. Chris makes the meeting fun.
I enjoy it.
Alrighty, Miss Victoria.
Someone does.
Well, we thank you. We appreciate you, everything that you do. And I see Mr. Blair lurking in the background there for the attendees too. So. I know that he is a wealth of knowledge and a bundle of help. So thank you to him as well.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys.
Have a great night.
So I'll see, so I'll see you in March now that I'm doing every three months. So I'll see you in March.
Probably before then, Victoria.
If not before.
Mrs. Nadowitz, over to you. Town Administrator Support Report.
Okay, keeping in mind the kickoff, kickoff is at 8:20. I am, last week, June, the accountant, building commissioner and I met regarding the electrical inspector fee structure. Because we are trying to prepare to get that position, the permanent position advertised. We think we are going to be able to resolve the challenges we've had. With a, you know, through a revolving fund rather than offset receipts. That would clean things up greatly and allow balances to carry from fiscal year in order to make payment. To electrical inspectors on large projects without having to be concerned about the changeover of fiscal year. Last week, we held the FY23 Budget Kickoff Meeting. There were some attendees, not everyone was able to attend, but I have sent the, the video link to everyone. Who was invited to the meeting. June did an excellent job going over the paperwork and. Mary Porter and Scott Schultz spoke on behalf of the Finance Committee regarding expectations for this year. As did, or next year, as did I. Several budgets were received by today's deadline. Some boards committees haven't yet had a chance to meet. So they have requested extensions and extensions will be granted in order for the boards and committees to meet and vote their budget requests. The Personnel Committee met last week and is continuing to review market data, market comps for various positions. There are about a dozen positions that we're still working on incremental adjustments, adjustments for. These positions fall below the minimum average range for all, for our comp towns. So those positions that are significantly behind average are the ones that we still, we have to focus on incrementally adjusting. In order to try to be competitive with all of our area, all of our neighboring towns who, who happen to be listed on comps. The exception of the very large one of Marlboro. And then lastly, I brought up to the Capital Planning Committee on Thursday night. The idea of putting together a group of local officials to conduct a one-day townwide facilities tour. To examine current condition, use, needs, disposition, potential and things. This would be a precursor to potentially doing a large, more comprehensive. Facilities assessment similar to what Medfield had done. And I don't know if you have, I think you do have access. To the Capital Planning Committee folder. I've included Medfield's assessment in there. After talking with the town of Medfield, they had 10 buildings included in their facilities assessment and their total cost was approximately $60,000. So before spending that kind of money, whether, you know, whether in part through grant funding or not. This one-day buildings tour could give us kind of an initial look at the buildings firsthand. And give us some ideas. I do have access to checklists that we could bring with us. And of the, those that I'm, I'm seeking to include in this group would be the Building Commissioner, Highway and Facility Superintendent. Myself, one Capital Planning Committee member, one Finance Committee member, one Select Board Member, one Planning Board Member. And that would be seven of us being able to go around, untake a tour of, of our town facilities. I think that's going to give us some. Some good valuable preliminary insight. And I'd like the board's thoughts on that. Good. So I'm going to be looking for a Select Board volunteer, whether you want to do that tonight or not. I know Capital Planning Committee was, was very enthusiastic. John Mavretic is going to be the Capital Planning Committee's representative on this group. So if there's any interest. Let me know and I'd like to schedule that as soon as possible.
I wouldn't mind doing it unless someone else really is dying to.
Well, I think you go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, remember, Chris, the, the, the theme is throw out, throw out as much as possible.
All right, good. I will be in touch. I will be in touch with a date. It's not going to be in the too distant future. I'd like to get this done. And we can include Berlin Memorial School because we already have an established annual walkthrough. We're supposed to be doing it Berlin Memorial. We might be able to get that in as well.
They, they usually do it in September, I think, when school opens, but I don't think they'll mind if they have to do it again.
Yeah, and, and we didn't do it last year because of COVID. So.
Right.
We can, yeah, so maybe we can just.
Yeah.
Do it kind of off.
They had a presentation last year instead, right? Remember they had that presentation in the library? I thought we were going to get, I thought we were going to get a tour and we didn't.
Yeah, no, no tour. So we'll, we'll schedule that.
Okay.
All right. That's all I have for tonight, but unless you have questions.
Do we need to have conservation on that list? And the only reason that I'm thinking is the chicken coop. You know, where it's close to, close to town pond and blah, blah, blah. And are there any buildings that we would need their input to? Potentially say this one's coming down, this one's coming down? I don't know. I don't know.
Coming down, but I think if we started talking about selling or taking down some of the older buildings, historical commission would clearly need to be involved.
And I'm wondering if that should be ancillary or, or, you know, the next step after the initial, the initial walkthrough. And then as the next step, we could, we could seek additional with conservation and historical and other stakeholders.
They could be advisory, advisory.
Could you send the checklist around, Margaret? I'm just curious as to what's on it.
Yep, if I can dig it up, it's, I have it from, I have it from one of my former accounts.
This is not a rush, you know, when you find it, that would be most awesome.
Yep. You mean the list from Fred?
No, no, no. Margaret said in her email that she has a. These checklists will provide information for both long-term capital planning and proper insurance coverages. So.
Okay.
For the facilities tour. Sounds like the twinkle tour, the facilities tour.
Peg, I have to be honest, I have to dig it up because that's, I have it from one of my previous, my previous towns. So I will, I will dig it up and circulate it as soon as I pull it out.
Maybe we could use the bus. Maybe we could use the van to, to do the tour.
Oh my God. I want to drive. Okay.
Like a snowman.
Yeah, and I'll, and I will find someone to dress us the tree. The lights still work on it. All right. Down to old business. So Mr. Naughton came for a visit last week, talked about PFAS. Downwater. Questions? It says review and vote for the sign-off document.
Yep. So this is going to be a vote on the PFAS litigation retainer agreement. So I had registered the town prior to this. Hank spoke with you last week. And now it's time for the Select Board to actually commit to participating. Just, you know, be aware that if there is a claim by the town or the town has awarded funds. Hank's firm, Napoli Skrolnik, would be able to receive 25% contingency fees. It's nothing that we would turn over. The settlement money would filter through them. They would retain 25% and the town would receive the rest. So just be aware of that. But again, this is committing to participating in the. What do you call it? The cost.
And it's not like there's competing options. It's not like there's like four of the law firms that have come to us saying they're doing a lawsuit, said they would give, charge us more or less. You know, there's a, there's a big national lawsuit that, that we're trying to decide if we want to be part of or not.
That's right. Exactly. So we'd, we'd still benefit.
I, I have one, one question and one comment. My question is, should this be run by Town Council?
I am happy to, I am happy to have Town Council review this. However, keep in mind that Copelman and Page are. Have, have partnered informally or otherwise with, with Hank's firm. So I'm happy to run this by Janelle for her comments before you sign.
Well, the, and the comment is that there is a typo in the last line of the document. It says signed and accepted. Look at the word accepted.
Okay.
So I just, you know, and I, I've forgotten that they were involved. And if they had put this together, then somehow it probably the typo just happened, but.
If the board would like to vote this tonight contingent on Town Council's review and approval. You could certainly, you could certainly, and of course, correction of that, of that typo too. I'm happy to get the Janelle's feedback for you.
I'm probably motioning that.
Okay, and I will second it.
So what are you motioning, Scott?
That, that we accept that we join the PFAS. Suits as, as presented by Naughton with a typo correction and provided the legal review doesn't find anything objectional.
Okay. Now I just wanted to be clear so we all knew. All right, Stone Eye?
Hawkins Eye.
Kefi.
There you go, Margaret.
Thank you. I'll get it over to Janelle.
Is there anything that we need to sign or is that all just you?
No, you will be signing once Town Council. Let me just, I want to make sure that we have. No, this is going to be you. Scott, could you just amend your motion to authorize the chair to sign?
I amend my motion to authorize the chair to sign for us.
And I will second that. A friendly amendment.
There you go.
Friendly amendment.
Yes.
Stone Eye?
Hawkins Eye.
Kefi.
And Mary has peg proofed the pen on the desk, so I will no longer sign in a random red pen that I pull off her desk. And it will be more back and I will know to always come with my own as well.
We weren't going to bring that up tonight, but thank you for the disclosure.
The pen. Could be worse.
Is that the one that's tied to the, is that the one that's tied to something on the desk? I think I accidentally un, un, pulled it off.
Mary, could you glue it?
No, I was, I was just signing away and pretty soon it was too far away and it pulled off.
I'll get some chain link.
Rubber bands, maybe.
Wow. All right. All right. So keeping an eye on the time, new business. Margaret, do you have any notices of intent to appoint tonight?
No, I don't.
All right.
Check that one out.
Right. And then next up is to acknowledge the 2020 retail liquor license renewals. Oh.
Okay. So I'm just asking Mary to, to reiterate the, the directive from ABCC.
By state law, all 13 had to sign that they were. In the month of November that they were renewing their retail liquor licenses and without too much bloodshed this year, all 13 have. Renewed on time. The last one being approved by the ABCC on November 22nd. And, and they still got their original renewal to us on time. So they're all good.
And now, Mary, we're going to be going through the local reviews now, correct? Or have we, have you gathered all that?
Sending, I did the budget today. I'm going to send out a call to all departments to review all the licenses, liquor and otherwise. So that that can be in front of the board in a couple of weeks for hopefully at one swoop. Approval of everyone except for the low, you know, the loose people. And then. I'm going to email them again.
Can we do any next week? Can we take care of some of the low hanging fruit? Any common vix, any entertainment, anything? Or is it, do you want the board to wait?
Inspections. So all the liquors are in. And I think that they've, we've got everything except for there's been no local review. So the treasurer hasn't told me if they're delinquent on taxes. So. I was giving everybody until Wednesday, the 15th to give me all of their feedback.
All right. So we'll put them all on for the 20th. All of them, everything, the whole slate. That will give enough time to actually have people come in and pick up their licenses for the coming calendar.
We're emailing them again this year.
Oh, that's good. Okay.
Okay.
All right, let's try, we'll, we'll try to shoot for the 20th, try to get them all done that night.
All right. So I think we are down to board questions and comments liaison updates. Chris? I know Victoria already gave yours, so that doesn't.
I know she did actually, except that there was two things, I think, two or three things she just left out. December 13th, they're going to have arts and crafts. At 11:30 AM in the COA room. And the 16th, there's going to be a webinar called Live In, which. I, I don't know much about. The Powderhouse News, they are going to do an article on Meet the New Police Chief. And they'll be looking to expand the newsletter and sponsorship. And next meeting is December 28th at 4:00 PM. They're still doing them online too.
Mr. Hawkins?
I, I don't really have anything today. I chatted a lot earlier on.
All right. I have three and they'll be wicked quick. So again, this past weekend, I shared with you what I looked like on Saturday. Thank God none of you were down there. I did get shamed because I was told that I wasn't real, that I had feet and real snowmen don't have feet. So thank you to Berlin Lions and the church and everybody else who pitched in. It was an incredible event. I drove through center of town tonight. The trees look awesome. So thank you to the people who fixed the electrical outlets. This makes Berlin a little bit of snow. It'll make Berlin look really nice. That's another discussion point. And the item, Chris, I know that you had given me comments of a few typos. Scott, anything with the article for the item?
Look, looks decent to me.
Okay. The only thing that I need to add, Eloise reached out and asked if I could just add in a ditty that the census would be out sometime in December or January. To remind people to do it and get it back. So I will update that. Take your comments, Chris, and I'll get that out to Jan tonight. And I'm done.
It also, I can also send you a tiny blurb from the town clerk on dog license renewals. The seniors are free and there's like a little couple of sentences I can send you if you want to put that in.
Absolutely. Send it along. I mean, I don't know if we'll make this week, but we'll make it next week. It doesn't matter as long as the information gets out there. Thank you, Mary. I appreciate that.
Can I just add one more thing, Peg?
Sure.
Okay, so I know in your item article that you did a very nice job thanking everybody who does so much for the town. And I wondered whether we could maybe put this on an agenda coming up. About a way to thank people that volunteer for the town and some kind of, and a way to appreciate them. Whether it be. Some night we get together and do pizza in a socially distant way or. Something of that sort. Cause I, you know, I really feel as though we do need to thank them for all of the things that they do.
Absolutely. Absolutely agreed. Okay. All right. I'll. I won't pop it on next week. I'll pop it on the week after. That'll give us some time to ponder as to what we can do. And while we're doing our liaison thing, you know, float it out there, you know, see what committees think.
Okay. Except for those that are audience.
Yes. All right. So we are down to executive session. We bring this over so I can read it and look at the camera as I'm reading it. Oh, please. All right. The board will enter executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. Berlin Police Union Local 264, we will adjourn from the meeting. All right. Uh, so we need a vote. So Stone Eye?
Hawkins' eye.
Kefi.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Uh, stay safe and, uh, we'll see you next week.